Yes, sir. Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
The President.
Commissioner Elazar Juajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo. Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Mario Bracamontes.
Here.
Okay.
Move the excuse absence members.
Hold on, is Commissioner Carrillo coming or? Okay. So you made a motion, right, to excuse? There was seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Close the passes. Excused. Pledge of allegiance.
Luis, will you please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our citizenship, our leadership, our customers, our workforce, and our business. May we always be mindful of their service. We confess that we are nothing without you and trust you, entrust in you completely. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor and council, we do have two proclamations. First proclamation is proclaiming 2019 National Police Week.
There he is. Welcome, Commissioner. All right, do we, is the representative for the police department who will be accepting this?
The police chief, I believe, is walking up.
Oh, great.
Good afternoon.
Chief Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, citizens.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here. Thank you, God, for giving us the opportunity to be here. But with that in mind, I want to talk to you just a little bit about
Sure.
2019 National Police Week. Everyday law enforcement officers serving across the U.S., which include the outstanding, motivated, and dedicated Farr Police Department, serve their communities and place their lives on the line. Law enforcement officers are asked to provide safety, be teachers, friends, mentors, and to be problem solvers. Police officers take on these duties with pride, professionalism, respect, integrity, discipline, and ethics. Mayor and Commissioners, what exactly is National Police Week? Why is it special? Simply put, National Police Week is a time and year in which all brothers at arms come together to remember our fallen heroes. Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week pay tribute to the local, state, and federal law enforcement officers who serve and protect us with courage and dedication. We pay tribute to the brave men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving and protecting our community. Let's honor and let's honor courage and salute the sacrifice. With that in mind, Mayor and Commissioners, with your permission, I would like to read a quick poem for all the motivated police officers.
Absolutely.
Each day they take, each day they risk, risk their lives for those they have not met. They fight for what's right. They're sworn to serve and protect. Their families often wonder, will my loved one come home tonight? Or was that hug the last hug I will have for tonight? They come when you need help and they take constant abuse. And yet, no matter what, they would, they would lay their, their lives down for you. Remember, they are human with their own hopes and dreams. They have families who love them and all they want is peace. Don't ever take them for granted, but treat them with respect. Thank them for all they do and let us never forget. With that in mind, Mayor, Commissioners, again, with your permission, I would like to ask the motivated police officers, please join me here in the front.
Sure.
Mayor, Commissioners, and our great citizens, our city managers, our deputy city managers, everybody, we just wanted to come here to you and present you with a small token of appreciation. Again, you are elected leaders, our leaders. We want to thank you so much for all your continued support, for the commitment to public safety, to the Farr Police Department, and to the great city of Farr. With that in mind, sir, we would like to present you with this and the Commissioners with a small token of appreciation, sir.
Oh, very nice.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So that's certainly a pleasant surprise, unexpected. It's, it's beautiful, first and foremost.
Yes, sir.
You know, as a, as your, as your mayor, I'm always delighted to see that people are happy in the city of Farr. And there's no better servants, obviously, than the people who put their life on the line, as you guys do, ladies and gentlemen, that you guys do every day. And it's, so it's a very important gift and a very sheriff's gift, and we understand. And we know that people have lost their lives. Actually, almost, if you look at the population of Farr, almost statistically, almost thirty percent, it really represents thirty percent of the population of Farr. That represents how many people have been lost in law enforcement, which is sad, but it's true. But regardless, on behalf of me, and I'm sure the City Commission will thank you for such a beautiful gift, on behalf of everybody in law enforcement throughout the nation, especially our police department, we're very proud of you guys and thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Now, for the proclamation. So whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteen falls a National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Farr Police Department, some sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately seventeen thousand injuries. Since the first recorded death in seventeen hundred eighty-six, over twenty-one thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, D.C., and three hundred seventy one new names of fallen heroes are being added this spring alone. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund Thirty-First Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of Monday, May thirteenth, twenty nineteen. The Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May thirteenth through the seventeenth. Whereas May fifteen is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. The city of Farr hereby formally designates and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the city of Farr, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May thirteenth to the seventeenth, twenty nineteen, as National Police Week. I witness, I witness where I hereby insert my hand and cause the seal of the city of Farr to be affixed on this sixth day of May of twenty nineteen. Here you go, Chief. You want to have your officers come up and do a picture? Have a photo of them. We'll let them.
Yeah, don't let them take the picture.
We want a photo of you guys.
We want you guys. You guys, I want you to be recognized for today.
Yes. Chief in the middle. Thank you.
All right, for the next proclamation, we've got the National Economic Development Week, and Karina and Victor Perez will be coming up and reading or explaining that proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners. As you know, this week, we celebrate also Economic Development Week, National Economic Development Week. We also celebrate with broader appreciation for you all because you are the support that we have there. As you know, the economic development is a backbone of every community, especially this beautiful, great city. And as you know that, you know, we work hard, we get things done, and as you can see, our, our city has grown. We look at ourselves, tax, we look at everything that we've done here in the city, but we partner with you and, and we're, with your support, we continue to move forward. And I'm going to have Karina just say a few words on our behalf, and again, we thank you and those of you that sit on our board, thank you for the support because when you let us work and let us do things, then we can get things done. So again, now I'm going to have Karina Lopez say a few words.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council. Karina Lopez, B R E manager for the Farr EDC. I wanted to hit, just to reiterate what Mr. Victor Perez had already mentioned. There's no way I can compete with the police department, obviously, but I did want to add that the economic development is the driving force for every community here in the Rio Grande Valley. And as we celebrate National Economic Development Week in the city of Farr, I'd like to take this opportunity alongside Victor Perez to recognize our Board of Directors, who currently serve with us. And it's going to be Mayor Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Elazar Juajardo, Commissioner Ricardo Medina, Commissioner Dr. Ramiro Caballero, Mario Liscano, Reynaldo Perez, and Ephraim Matamoros. We are very fortunate to have you guys, a well-rounded group and forward-thinking board. It is because of your time, vision, and commitment that the city of Farr continues to grow and thrive. Thank you for your service. We invite our present board members that are currently present to receive their proclamation alongside our Executive Director, Victor Perez, after the proclamation is read. Thank you.
Great. Yes, great job, great presentation, and you're right, the, the city is doing very well, prosperous, sales stacks are good, the economy is very, doing double digits, doing very well, but that's thanks to your, your leadership and of course, the backing of the Commission and, and your endeavors and how you put things together and, you know, the, the proof is in the pudding. It's not what we say, it's what the State Comptroller says. And Glenn Hager clearly has stated that we're clearly the, one of the best communities, if not the greatest economic engine currently in the Rio Grande Valley, and we're proud of that. And we're, it's because of you and your employees that do such a great job. So it's really congratulations to you and your leadership at the EDC.
Before I read the proclamation, again, I'd like to, again, being part of the EDC, I want to take Victor and Karina, of course, you know, your team has been, over the past, you know, four years, has really improved the city of Farr. I know Tony and Jameson, I don't know if they're here, but they're part of your team and nothing but good news and praise to your, to your staff. Representing the mayor, the proclamation states, whereas economic developers work with industry brokers and other key allies to produce a proper business climate that will result in the creation of high-quality jobs, development, vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas the economic development profession recognizes its roles in a region's long-term success by addressing issues vital to businesses such as workforce availability, training, international trade, direct foreign investments, incentives, and reduced costs of operations. And whereas the city of Farr recognizes it is the vital part of the region's success due to its commitment to the Viable Economic Development Program and a strong partnership with other communities in South Texas. And whereas the city of Farr Economic Development Corporation works closely with local, state, federal, and international partners to help spur economic development, to foster growth, and to promote trade and commerce in Farr. And whereas the Farr International Bridge is a key mechanism for economic development activities, supporting thirty billion in trade with the world, is the leading port of produce crossings, and the only fully commercial international bridge in the region. And whereas the city of Farr continues to remain committed to supporting economic development activities and encourages all citizens to recognize and praise the valuable role that economic development plays to contribute to the vitality and quality of the life in our community. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, and Dr. Caballero, representing the Mayor Ambrosio, Mayor of the city of Farr, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and behalf of the mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim May sixth through May eleventh, twenty nineteen, as Economic Development Week in Farr. Congratulations.
All right, Mayor and Commissioners, I would also like to take this time to recognize the PSJ North High School Ladies Raider softball team, who have been, who have been officially crowned district champions. For the first time in ten years, the Lady Raiders softball program will be heading into the six A state playoffs. This will not only be the first playoff appearance in the past ten years, but also the first for first-year head coach Stephanie Lugo and first-year assistant coach Cristo Dominguez. The Lady Raiders had a rough start in preseason with a ten-ten season record going into district. As the Lady Raiders entered district, the team is led by five remarkable seniors. This team has poured their heart and soul into the diamond and are seeing the results of their hard work and dedication. As the season progressed, the Cinderella story began with a district record of thirteen-one and the titles of district and by district champions. This story continues as they head to the area playoffs. We want to wish them the best of luck at the area playoffs and congratulate them on the successful season thus far.
Yeah. Welcome, ladies, welcome, welcome. Are your coaches here?
Yes.
Those, those kids? Thanks. Oh, okay, all right. Well, welcome. It's our great city. Congratulations once again for your, obviously, your coaching is done, but, you know, you guys have great talent and to remember, it's not how you start, it's how you finish.
Yes.
So clearly, you're doing very well, and we're, as far as the mayor's office and the Commission, we're extremely proud of you guys, and there's no better victory than have you, you know, become victorious on your own merits. And yes, it was a little rough, but it's okay. Look, look where you are now. And this will set you up in the future. Whatever you learn here now, remember, it transcends baseball. You'll be able to carry this throughout your life and life as a whole. Always be winners. You drive, you the one that drive the boat. You're the one that set the, the own agenda for yourself and your goals. So whatever you guys decide to do, keep doing it, don't let anybody stop you. So having myself, I'm very proud of you, I'm sure my, the Commissioners want to say something to you. So anybody else want to say something to?
Just, boy, Bob.
You can start from the left.
We're all excited, sorry.
No, I mean, same, probably, same thing Bobby was going to say, is that Bobby, Bobby's had his kids here also at Raiders, very proud of, of, of supporting Raiders. We're all for you guys, but what you guys did was pretty cool because at the very beginning, the way the mayor said, man, we were like, oh, really? It's going to be one of those years again. And, and I think, Coach, you'll be able to tell us a little bit about, because I think you just, you just beat Westlake, all right? So what are you going into now?
Very good night.
Good job.
Sweet sixteen.
Oh, awesome.
And, and guess who they're going to play? Their alma mater, they're going to play Harlingen South, that's where they bought the room.
Oh, you went to Harlingen?
Yes.
Don't worry, we're going to hold it against you.
Good luck.
Yeah, just congratulations, and yeah, well, just, my son went to PSJ North, I was a big-time booster back in the day, president of Booster Club for several years, and so my nephew's, he teaches there, one of my nieces worked there, they're sort of a lot of products, a lot of my family members are product from PSJ North, so from the bottom of my heart, congratulations and thank you for what you do, participating in these extracurricular activities. I know it takes away a lot from your studies, but thank you very much because you're, now you're representing Farr, so when you go beat Harlingen, when you go, not if, when you go beat Harlingen, tell them, look, you know what? We're from Farr, don't forget us.
Yes.
All right, Bob, and one more thing, congra, Ms. Lisa Diaz.
Principal.
Yeah, principal, she's back there. Lisa, you rocked it, man. Okay? Is she awesome or what?
Good.
Thanks to you, Lisa.
Now, is this going to be televised? Are we going to be able to see it?
Yes, we are playing that Thursday on Friday at home, and then Saturday we'll be playing Harlingen South at five, and then very soon after that game at five, we'll play our third game in the new stadium.
Right, but we'll be able to see it, it'll be televised on PSJ Network, then? Okay, great, so it'll be here, look, first, got it, got it. Okay, so you ladies will do us a, the favor, we'd like to see you guys in front of the city hall here, facing that way in two rows, that way they can take a picture of you guys for the team? Yeah, because they're, they're long, it's almost not.
Oh, yeah.
The tall ones in the back, there you go.
They're just not as wide as the PD.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Also, Mayor, Council, at this point, I would also like to ask the, the Fire Department, who held a fundraiser for DPS Trooper Moisés Sanchez, to come up and, I know Mr. Salazar wanted to say a few words.
Sure.
And we've got some folks here to represent Mr. Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, City Manager, Mayor. It was the last, I believe, was the last council meeting that we had, Mr. Carrillo, Commissioner Carrillo had asked to see if the first responders could do some type of fundraiser.
Right.
For a state trooper, Sanchez, that had gotten hurt in line of duty. So what we did is, I got with Mr. Commissioner Carrillo and Juajardo, and we talked about, we came out with Fill the Helmet. Fill the Boot is more associated with MDA, so we went with Fill the Helmet. So what we did is, not me or the Chief Perez, but the firefighters on the truck went out there to the intersections, five different days, and they were able to collect, we make these signs right here, to kind of identify why we were out there picking up donations. And at the end of the day, the count was five thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars
Wow.
that we were able to pick up. So with that, we do have representatives from DPS. Would you like to come up here? And we're going to give you the funds from the Fire Department, transfer more to you, and I don't know if you have anything to say, on behalf of Mr. Sanchez.
If I made mayor before, before Trooper Hernandez starts, me and Johnny go back years, years, years. He's a product of the Farr Police Department.
Wow, oh, great.
Came in back in
Even better.
A lot of years ago, I'm not going to say how many because
Back in the eighties, so we first started. Had a lot of fun in Farr PD, a lot of fun. It was, it was a great career, to be honest with you. Mayor, City Commissioners, City Staff, citizens of Farr, the Fire Department, on behalf of the Texas Department of Public Safety, the Trooper Sanchez, the family, we're very humbled to accept this donation. As you know, our trooper was shot in the head, and he was shot also in the shoulder area. He is at DHR getting the best care there, and he eventually, he is coming around, he's still in ICU, but our trooper is, is tough, and the doctors can only do so much, but God's going to do the rest. And, and on behalf of the Texas Department of Public Safety and family, we, we accept this donation and, and we, we thank all the citizens of Farr and, and yourselves also as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have a picture?
Yeah, absolutely. Aquir Hernandez. Get your, your colleague. That's right.
I think this is something else.
A lot of his wife's going to get mad at him if he don't take a picture.
Very true. Thank you.
At this point, we move on to public hearings. Hilda, do we have any, anyone registered to speak? Item four, City Manager's Report. We got the City Engineers' Report, which can be found in your packet, and our City Engineers here, if anybody has any questions. Item four B, City Events. At the Farr Event Center, on Monday, May sixth, we got the P J, PSJ North banquet from six to eight P.M. On May seventh, the PSJ Memorial Banquet from six to eight P.M. May eighth, PSJ Early College High School banquet from six to eight P.M. May fourteenth, is the PSJ Southwest High School banquet, six to eight P.M. May fifteenth, PSJ Jefferson High School banquet, six to eight P.M. And on Friday, the seventeenth, the McHale Memorial High School Kicker Dance from six to midnight. Also, we would like to take this time to congratulate Kenneth Ennis, Farr's Assistant Director of Communications, for receiving the Supervisor of the Year Award from the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council. Mr. Kenneth is here, and Danny Dermidis is Supervisor.
Just for the record, Kenneth Ennis, Assistant Director of Communications. I was grateful enough to win the Supervisor of the Year from L R G B C nine-one-one for the second year running. I couldn't have been able to do it without my director, Danny, giving me the motivation to do so, and my staff in believing in me and actually nominating me for it. So I appreciate the recognition one hundred percent.
Congratulations, Kenneth.
Congratulations, sir. Good job, Danny.
We would also like to congratulate firefighter Robert Hernandez for being awarded the firefighter of the year by the Rio Grande Valley Firefighters and Fire Marshals Association. Mr. Hernandez, I don't know if he's here, and Mr. Salazar.
Okay, so this is the last one for us, but we want to recognize one of our own, Robert Hernandez, firefighter. He's the second individual from the Fire Department that receives the award. We had another firefighter receive it in twenty seventeen, and this year it was Robert Hernandez. He's been with the city for thirty-three years. On April fourteenth, he was recognized by the Rio Grande Valley Firefighter Fire Marshals Association, which represents forty-one fire departments through five counties down here in the valley. He was awarded the Richard Jury Firefighter of the Year Award. The award was based on the following: community involvement, acts of heroism, training, accomplishments, and fire department involvement. So congratulations, Robert. Really deserve it for everything you do and the passion that you have for training. And from this point on, we're going to be sending his name and application to the state, which will, the conference will occur in June. And from this point on, we're gonna be sending his name and application to the state, which will, the conference will occur in June.
Wow.
Congratulations, sir.
So, can we ask for one more picture?
Yes.
One more thing, Robert's real, uh, in our department right now, he's the one that's been heading our EMS program by teaching pneumatics. And because of what he's been doing for us, we've been able to improve about ten to fifteen, uh, EMTs because of what he's done for us. So, that's the kind of accomplishment he's done for us in the department.
Item five, Consent Agenda, uh, all items under this consent agenda are considered to be routine, non-controversial.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to abstain from item five C.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item, uh, six eight, Consideration in Action, if any, on resolution appointing one member to the FAR Police Department, uh, Training Advisory Board. Uh, Jose Garcia has been, um, is, or our police chief is recommending Jose Garcia, uh, be appointed to the board. Mr. Garcia is retired and spent his career at the US Customs Board of Protection, staff recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item six B, Consideration in Action, if any, on resolution concerning AP Distribution Cost Recover Factors, Applications to, uh, Increase Distribution Rates. AP Texas filed an application with the Public Utility Commission of Texas and Cities that have retained original jurisdiction over AP Texas. A request to change the rates is, it charges on, or the use of its transmission distribution lines and related services. The purpose of this resolution is to deny or decline AP's, uh, request.
Move for denial.
So, be moved to approve the resolution, which would decline their request.
Second.
We have a second, okay, any discussion? All was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item seven A is the presentation of the twenty nineteen City of FAR Performance Review Summary by Michael Erbrock from UTRGV.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, sir.
City Commissioners, City Manager, uh, my name's Michael Erbrock, I'm the Director of, uh, Data Center at UTRGV. Um, this is my third time being here, I was back here in two thousand sixteen.
Yes, sir.
Also in two thousand eighteen, last year, and so this is the latest report that I'm here to present the results on.
Okay.
Um, so just to give you a big introduction, this was the survey that we did to evaluate the performance of city leadership. So, this was done by the, uh, a survey that was done for the city employees, um, to get their feedback on how y'all are doing collectively. And this was done at the, uh, a training event on January twenty-second and twenty-third, where the surveys were passed out. It was, uh, done in English and Spanish. Um, it was voluntary and anonymous, so nobody was, um, had to give their name. And a total of five hundred and sixty-five surveys were completed, so that represents a really good response rate, almost ninety-five percent of all full-time employees. Again, so the, um, basically, the survey was asking the, the employees to rate the city, this, you know, the mayor, the city manager, and also the city commission, on ten different leadership qualities, and they're all a little different, they weren't, they weren't the same, so I just wanna say first of all, um, that you really can't compare the scores of, of the mayor to the city manager and, and the city commission because they were rated on different, on different leadership qualities. But they were asked to rate, um, the rating scale was one is, is poor, and all the way to five is excellent. So, the higher the number, um, basically, the higher the rating that the employees thought, um, of, of the performance. So, we'll start out with the mayor, um, overall, the employees are satisfied with the performance of the mayor. Um, on a scale of one to five, uh, one being poor, five being excellent, the mayor received a, uh, three point eight-six average, which is on the high side of, uh, it's above average, or well, close to almost above average, which is a four. Um, these were the ten different statements, and these are just, just, um, in general, the summary of, of the things that the mayor, the, the employees were asked to rate the mayor on. So, you can see that the, the colors, the, the green and the orange is above average and excellent, so those are the things that, um, you know, those with, uh, a good, a higher number is, is what they rated him like. For example, clear priorities, which is, uh, question one, was rated very high, highly for the mayor. And then if you look at the blue and, and the pink, those are the ones that are rated below or below average for, for areas of, of, of improvement. We basically calculated an average, so it makes it a little easier to, 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 to compare the, the different things. Um, in terms of, uh, the mayor's ratings, the, the ratings that were, were rated the highest were clear priorities, shared vision, planning and organization, goals and strategy, makes proud, improvement in judgment, and team morale. And then the, uh, kind of the mid-ratings were, uh, learning change and input and teamwork. And then the, on the low end was, um, Q five, which was accessibility and feedback, that was, that was rated the lowest. Well, since we've been doing this for the last three years, this, it gives us some good trend data to kind of analyze the trends in terms of, while the employees think in terms of performance. But if you look at two thousand sixteen, which is the blue color, and then you look at the green color, which is two thousand nineteen, you can see a, a really, uh, improvement in ratings overall for, for the mayor and, and pretty much, uh, most of, most of, most of the, the statements or categories which, um, the employees were being asked to, to rate the mayor on. So, overall, we calculated an average of, of all the statements, and the mayor's, um, ratings improved overall from two thousand sixteen, from a, an average of three point six, to two thousand nineteen, which was, uh, a three point eight-six. So, it was a gain of about a quarter of, a quarter of a point, but it, it is showing employees are rated, rated, um, higher. There's also a portion, uh, part of the survey which are asked for comments, and employees can, and leave comments. The mayor received eighty-seven, eighty-seven comments, which represented about fifteen percent of, of the employees surveyed. And, uh, most of the comments, the top five comments, but the majority of the comments were, were praise satisfaction with the mayor's performance in terms of the job that he's, he was doing. Um, that was the majority of the comments, there were some comments about pay raises, uh, certification pay, which was thirteen percent, uh, visibility and contact eleven, uh, politics hiring seven, and, uh, trust carrying five percent. And move on to the City Commission, o- overall, the employees are also satisfied with the performance of the City Commission, um, on a scale of one to five, again, um, okay, it says mayor, but it's, it's City Commission. Um, three point six-two was, was the, the overall rating, which is, uh, between an average and, and above average, average rating. And this is the breakdown of, of the, um, the ratings by, by, um, by the thing, and, uh, highest was Plans for the Future, which received a above average and excellent ratings, and then the lowest was Overseen Staff. Again, if we look at the, the averages here, the things that were rated the highest were the City Commission or, or City Commissioners, Plans Future, Understands Economic Development, Promotes Accomplishments, Works With Cities, Maximizes Services. Uh, mid-ratings were Understand Residents' Needs, Planning and Budgeting, Evaluates Ideas, and here's public testimony, and, and the lowest was, uh, Ob- Overseen Staff. Again, if we, if you look at the trend data from two thousand sixteen and two thousand, um, eighteen and two thousand nineteen, you can see, um, an improvement in, in the ratings of, for the City Commission. Um, employees rated, if you, if you look at the average of, of all the ten statements, um, the employees rated the City Commission higher overall. Um, in two thousand sixteen, it was a three point three-five, and in two thousand nineteen, it was a three point six-two. So, um, there was also an improvement, uh, in their ra, a gain of point two-five, about a quarter of a point, in what the employees feel, how the, how the City Commission is, is, is performing. The City Commission received fifty-seven comments, which represents about ten percent of the employees. Um, the top five comments, again, were, are praise satisfaction with the City Commission's performance, you know, they're doing a good job. Twenty-five percent of the, of the comments were just, um, concerning the praise. Um, there were some comments about visibility and contact, um, hiring, um, again, pay raises, certification, and, and listening commu- communication. Uh, move on to the City Manager, um, this was a little different because I think, I believe Alex was just coming in, so.
It's not your fault.
Uh, I think a lot of these ratings were probably of the performance of, of, of the past City Manager, but, um, overall, they were satisfied with performance of the City Manager, three point seven-two, um, and that's, again, above averag, it's between average and, and above average. Um, the breakdown, um, the, the highest was, um, strategic vision, and the lowest was people, uh, at places. Again, we look at the, the, the averages on, on, in terms of, um, what was rated the highest, was encourage employees, strategic objectives and vision, employees develop, employee development, responsibility and accountability, teamwork, uh, motivation of staff. Mid was environment and processes, employee decisions, and, and motivates employees, and the low was people, people and places. Um, ratings for the City Manager were also higher in all areas, um, consistent with the, the mayor and the City Commission.
Should.
Um, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand, two thousand nineteen, um, two thousand sixteen was a three point two average, and then two thousand nineteen was a three, a three point seven-two average, which is a gain of almost a half, a half a point.
What was it in two? Three point, it was three point two?
In two thousand sixteen, it was a three point two-six.
Then?
And then two thousand nineteen, a three point seven-two, so almost half a point. Um, and again, a lot of, a lot of the people that made the comments, um, the City Manager said that, you know, Alex was just coming in, so, um, they were kind of just preferring to, they weren't really able to rate him at this point, and they're getting, pretty much giving the benefit of the doubt.
You guys need to light him up, don't worry.
But there were, there were some positive comments, uh, in the report I provided, the, the breakdown of all the comments, um, for, for each of the, the, the city leadership. So, you can go through there, there were, there were some positive comments about, about Alex in there, so you may wanna look at the, look at the individual, um.
Did you compare apples to onions?
And the individual comments, um, again, praise nineteen percent, and then praise certification was three percent. So, and all, overall, uh, I think two thousand nineteen, we saw the highest ratings, um, in terms of, of the performance of city leadership in the mayor, the city, the City Commission, and also the city managers. Um, all ratings were at le, at least between, um, a bu, between average and above average, and closer to mo, almost the above average, which is the four. If you get a four, you're, um, above average or exceeding expectations. Um, so, and, and in terms of the themes of the comments, I mean, and, and there, there were a couple of things. One, um, people, they are satisfied, a lot of the comments were satisfaction, doing a great job, keep the good work. Um, you know, pay is still there, that's, that's the one, still in there with, with some of, some of the employees are still concerned about pay raises, pay certification. Um, visibility contact is also, uh, s, some of the comments, they'd like to see the, you know, the, see more visibility contact with, with the city leadership, getting out, um, and, um, just being with the employees. So, that in a nutshell is, is the summary of, of the two thousand nineteen, um, performance review. Do you have any questions?
Is there, what are the cities doing this that you're working with? What are the cities doing this? This type of analysis, what, which of the cities are?
Um, well, as, as a, you're, you're the only city that we do this for.
Okay, I thought McAllen was doing it also, my mistake, I'm sorry.
No, we do, we do some other things for McAllen, and we've done some other things for FAR, but.
Right, well, I for one, I like to, I always, uh, I like information, I know there's always room for improvement for everybody.
Yeah.
Right, and, uh, I would encourage the employees to always, uh, speak honestly and frank, and, uh, otherwise, it's impossible for us to know, um, where we lack and where we need to improve, and also what we're doing, what we're doing correctly.
Yeah.
And so, it's, uh, we implemented this for that purpose, to be sure.
And I applaud y'all for doing that, it, it takes courage to, you know, get comments from your employees on, 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 on how you're doing. So, it's, uh, it's, it's good for, I think, for y'all to see, so you know, you know how the employees feel, how, how y'all are doing, so.
Yeah.
And it's good that we also, you know, tracking it every year, so.
That's right.
You can see the, the trends.
Yeah, and, uh, one last comment, I don't know if you guys wanna say anything, but I wanna be sure the employees know that, uh, we appreciate your comments. In the end, it, the, the city is run by the City Manager, and we are prohibited by charter to be involved in the day-to-day, day-to-day operations and/or in hiring employees or promoting or demoting or firing, whatever it is, we don't get involved. We, we set policy and will let the, uh, City Manager and Deputy City Manager, uh, take care of the rest. So, if you don't see us involved with those types of issues or, and or raises, that's because we're not allowed to, for the record.
All right.
Anybody else?
I just wanna make a comment because, uh, on the observation, I saw it was ninety-five percent of the full-timers?
Yes.
That actually.
Yes.
Did deserve, that was a big, big response, and, and to me, I, usually, it's only about forty, fifty percent of them, it's usually not that high. So, I'm glad that they, that they participated because that's very important.
Yeah, and it's always been pretty high in, in terms of the, the feedback we get from the employees, so they do have a lot of opinions.
Good, we have good employees.
Great.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item seven B, uh, consideration in action of any on change order number one for the Thomas Road Left Turn Lane Construction Project. Uh, change order number one is to provide drainage improvements to the adjacent alley which ponds, uh, during rain events. Uh, staff recommends approval of change order number one to add eight thousand one hundred two dollars and eighty cents to MGA construction for the Thomas Left Turn Lane Construction Project.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, all was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item seven C, it's a consideration in action of any authorizing City Manager to amend the agreement with the construction manager at risk for various parks and projects. At this point, I believe we're gonna go into executive session.
Hold it, yeah, let's, let's skip that, let's finish the rest and then we'll come back to that.
Item eight A. Uh, consideration in action of any on purchasing ten twenty nineteen police Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles using the Tarrant County Co-op, uh, number twenty nineteen, uh, dash zero one-four. Um, three hundred twenty thousand dollars for budgeted for, uh, ten twenty nineteen Chevy Tahoe police pursuit vehicles. However, this purchase will be a total of three hundred seventeen thousand, so staff recommends approval, it's within budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item nine A, uh, consideration in action of any authorizing City Manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Aldana, um, Engineering and Traffic Design LLC for professional engineering design service for a new traffic signal, um, at the intersection of Jackson Road in Minnesota. TechSOT has requested the city prepare a design for a new traffic signal at the intersection of Jackson and Minnesota. TechSOT has received funding for these improvements, and the traffic signal construction will be fully funded by TechSOT. However, the design will be paid by, uh, we're asking that the city cover that cost of seventeen thousand. So, staff's recommending approval and authorization to negotiate and enter into a contract with Aldana Engineering and Traffic Design from Weslaco for professional engineering design services for a new traffic signal at the intersection of Jackson and Minnesota.
So moved. Taken.
Any discussion, all was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item nine B, consideration in action of any on the MOU with South Texas College for the Police Academy Basic Peace Officer Certification, and staff recommends approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Item nine C, consideration in action of any on the MOU between the City Farm and the American River Cross. Uh, the MOU between the City Farm and the American River Cross as it pertains to services providing during disasters or no notice events that affect the citizens of FAR, and staff recommends approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Now, in accordance with section five five one point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice it is convening executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time being nine four forty-nine, that is the time. Okay, the time is five oh four, we're back.
Right, item, uh, seven C, consideration in action of any authorizing City Manager to amend the agreement with the construction manager at risk for various park projects. Amendment number four is a zero-cost change to the C-Marc contract, and staff recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, we are adjourned, the time is five oh five, thank you.